This special call meeting, call this special call meeting to order. This special call meeting is gonna be just like Liz Taylor told her last husband. You ain't gonna be here long. Yeah. Okay, uh, the call is, special call meeting to order as stated before, we do have a call. At this time, I ask you to follow up. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to sit down today. We ask you, Heavenly Father, to intervene in this meeting as we express the visions of the city. Also ask, bless all the councilmen along with their family and everyone who's in attendance of this special call meeting. We ask you, Heavenly Father, to brace your loving arms around this city and to beat any eagle that's trying to hold off about this city. Heavenly Father, we ask you, this blessing to many more, amen.
Amen.
All right, this time, do we have a motion to approve the special call meeting adjourned? Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson. We have a second, second Councilman on the floor. Uh, any other items that you would like to add at this time? Any other items? Okay, would that motion been stated? We have a motion on the floor by, most of the mayors, by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman LeShaw. Uh, at this time, uh, roll call, President Booley, yes, uh, Councilman Johnson.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilman LeShaw here. Uh, Councilwoman Thomas?
Here.
And Councilman Booley?
Here.
All right, we have, like I said before, five members there here first. At this time, uh, we're gonna move forward to approving the, uh, February of twenty twenty, uh, special call meeting we have already approved, a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson, and second, Councilman LeShaw. At this time, roll call to approve the adjournment. Uh, Councilman, uh, Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Booley?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman LeShaw?
Mr. President, I have just one question before I cast my vote.
Yes, sir.
Who's gonna speak to the council about the business of transfer of land?
Uh, we're waiting for Mayor Madison to come in. He, 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 he's gonna come in.
My vote is yes.
Okay, also, Councilwoman Thomas?
We're waiting.
Just, just to approve the adjournment?
Just to prove it, yes.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you. Uh, on Monday, we attended the water board meeting, uh, before Mayor Madison come in. And, uh, it was a long, it was a harm to me that, uh, we definitely need to do a transfer of title as well as property, uh, because it goes back to nineteen, November twenty-fifth, nineteen sixty-eight, where the transfer, uh, said our attorney would give us more in-depth information, information about it. But what we need to do today is to transfer this piece, piece of property to the Selma Water Board authority so they can go ahead and proceed in, in a grant that they need to submit, uh, by tomorrow. And that's the whole gist behind this, uh, work session here. But as soon as the attorney will, uh, be coming forth, he can give us more information about it. Uh, this property is located in the, uh, Johnson Water Title. We just need to transfer it to the water as soon as we can. But like I said before, uh, we're gonna wait until attorney come and Councilwoman Thomas, we're gonna let her, as of course as I see may have, and also Councilman Johnson can follow up because he serves on the water.
Well, my only thing that I, I'd like to know a little bit more detail about this, uh, this land being transferred to the water board, because like you said, it has a title, section code eleven, forty-three fifty-six, and you said it was done in, what, nineteen?
Well, nineteen sixty, he gave you more, uh...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying before I, I cast, I'd like to have a little bit more.
That's fine.
What happened was back in nineteen sixty-eight, um, um, the, the city had, um, uh, did, oh, I think it was, the tram, yeah, turned everything over, uh, until the water, Selma Water Board, and, uh, and it was passed through the body council, which was approved, but the deed wasn't, uh, hadn't been transferred yet. So, but let the attorney come on through, uh, talk about it real quick. And it was the Johnson.
Yeah, that is for the, also too, Councilman, we need to keep in mind, uh, the city property, I mean, the school board property, it was a version there, the clause that refers back to the city. But I also ask, um, Attorney Madison to also look at the deed to make sure that we go on the deed to be, uh, returned to the city itself. But, uh, Attorney Madison give us update of Russell's R one oh one nineteen twenty, and I ask, uh, Attorney Madison to go ahead and draft this resolution 'cause I thought that the, the fact that Commissioner Lee D. Webb, um, tomorrow, this resolution will also be approved.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President, uh, good afternoon, members of the council. Ladies and gentlemen, um, I wanted to move the podium out of there, I don't wanna be all of them, Councilman Johnson, I really am trying to talk. Kenny, you hear me, first of all?
Oh, yeah, right.
Okay. Uh, this matter came to my attention by way of, uh, Representative Attorney Prince Chestnut at the Selma Water Board, because he's their attorney, um, I wasn't aware of the situation, but he put it on my radar, uh, thank you. What he said was, what he sent me was a, a statement, first of all, that he needed to, to, uh, speak with the president of the council and council. Johnson, I didn't realize Councilman Johnson was on the water until I got to the meeting the other day, but I know now he is. Uh, he's also in your district too, I believe, the property is situated in, and that question is in Council, Councilman Johnson's district. There is a water tower known as the Johnson Water Tower that sits on property that heretofore in the past was owned by the city of Selma. According to Representative Chestnut, and I have to finalize validation of not only that deed, which I believe he sent me a copy of, having trouble, um, on my computer, not the, not the city's computer, on my computer, uh, because it wasn't wirelessly connected before today, but I've got a copy of a deed Attorney Chestnut sent me. It's an old Blackberry, that's, I can tell it was old since I opened up my, my inbox, which purports that the city of Selma transferred property to the Selma Water Service System in nineteen sixty-eight. I believe the exact date is November twenty-fifth, nineteen sixty-eight. However, there were several pieces of property transferred, and apparently, allegedly, the deed itself evidencing the transfer of real property was never forwarded to the Selma Water Service System. So it's not a question of if we're doing the right thing, it's a question of completing what was already begun and possibly was an oversight or never got to. The deed never got to the Selma Water Service System as far as we know. It might have gotten there, it might have been in this place, I can't speak to that, I only can talk about the facts that I, as I know. So the question before the council today is, A, whether to ratify the action of the November twenty-fifth, nineteen sixty-eight council transferring the land by this resolution, resolution which I've designated R one oh one nine dash nineteen slash twenty. And I say I designated it because the city truck has been out of the office two days now with a, a medical, family medical, uh, issue. Uh, I will confirm the resolution number. Uh, I did a little bit further checking to make sure that your action today would not be nullified if passed today in this session of the council, uh, without that resolution number, uh, there being, uh, the correct one and, and needing to be replaced. And I was told that the action taken and the title of the resolution control what's happening, not the number. The number is a codification of a recorder, a system to record the, the action taken by the, by the council. That was just a part for me to know. First of all, in the future, I should be able to get the number ahead of time, so it shouldn't even be an issue. But the action taken in November nineteen sixty-eight was taken to transfer both, I think, the tower and the land, but the deed to the land never got to the Selma Water Service System. So we're, what we're doing today is making sure that the deed transferring the actual land on which the water tower sits, the water tower can exist in the air by itself, it sits on the land. So the deed transferring the title to the land is what I'm asking the council to ratify today as already voted on, I believe, by the November twenty-fifth, nineteen sixty-eight city council.
Right. It's a pump also, it was a, a pump station as well. So when you said other areas, it was like the pump station was sitting in along with the tower. Uh, and I, and I say this because, uh, the, uh, the city is not in shape to be able to take any towers and any pumping, and the water work is going on, some jockeying grants and stuff keep going. So we really need to go and we forward this. I think that what the city's intention was to go ahead and let the water work handle this, and, 'cause they really might not be able to take care of it.
And the urgency of the matter was, was as, as a course of action of the Selma Water Service Systems needing a grant proposal to be submitted right away, that's the urgency of the matter.
All right, do I have a motion on the floor? Go ahead, get back and ask, go ahead. What is the name of the matter, Councilman Johnson?
Uh, we, we got some, um, um, repairs and stuff that need to be done, and, um, uh, can't, I don't have the report right now, but this was, it, it's, this, something gotta be submitted in by tomorrow, uh, on some repairs that we in the process of doing, going to some pump stations and, and some towers and stuff to get done. I came on, I don't have the, the, the form with me that, that's our form that we got to get, uh...
This is a grant being applied more by the engineer of the water board?
I think, I think yes, it is, or that, yes, it is, uh, one of them, if I'm not mistaken.
Chairman, Chairman Booley, I sent you a copy of the draft. I deleted two words, it was a Latin phrase that I thought was superfluous and that even need to be in the resolution. That's why that's coming through. It's the same resolution with that Latin phrase he never made.
Okay. And of course, my question to you, Mr. President, I support the, uh, activity of Selma Water Board, too, but I think it's a marvelous job, but as a council person, I, I do, uh, collect, have more information about the urgency, about the deed in the land, and of course, uh, I think the question is that there would be a reversion clause in, in case the water board ceases to maintain the tower, I'm not sure.
And also, if I understand, come ahead.
Okay, okay, whatever you say, I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, uh, to move forward. We're just basically ratifying the firm, the act was, uh, where it, um, moved forward to nineteen sixty-eight, but however, we just need to finalize the, uh, the deal and make sure that we revert the resolution back to the water board. I have a motion on the floor by Councilman LeShaw, second by Councilman Johnson.
If I need to bring the thing with me on the council meeting, I will, on Tuesday.
Okay.
The grant, I mean, I mean, the grant that we, we shoot, uh, this time and tomorrow.
Go ahead, Mike.
I, I don't think that's gonna be necessary, and of course, the reason I said, because I don't want this to stall the council people that are not here wanting information.
All right, and I appreciate it.
We don't, we don't wanna keep anything from anybody, but everybody has a responsibility once they got elected to serve in their capacity of council people. And I do realize that there are various reasons why I'm not here, I don't like criticizing that, but I don't want this to be tied up with a long, envious discussion on something that could have been handled today.
All right, and of course, this, Councilman Thomas?
My question is, uh, I heard what you said, uh, uh, Charlie, but, uh, there are other things that I, I'm, I'm not quite getting about this. I understand what you wanna move, they wanna move this land back. Is it that you're giving this land, this land is going? This land belongs to, to the, to the city, and what we're doing is reversing it over, we're giving it back? We giving it to the water tower since the water tower was on it?
Well, basically, it did back in nineteen sixty-eight. They just didn't, you know, uh, do it via a resolution, so we can just move it forward, vote on it, ratify it firmly, and then take this resolution and give it back to the water board showing that, uh, we have, um, deed and land over. They did it back in nineteen sixty-eight, but they didn't finalize it via a resolution, anything like that.
With the deeds.
With the deeds and stuff like that. It, it was just about the gentleman's agreement, I guess.
So I'm saying, they do, you do have documentation somewhere about this that they did.
Oh, yeah, that's right. In the minutes of the November twenty-fifth, nineteen sixty-eight council meeting.
Yeah, that's all right.
And, and that's what's referenced in the second paragraph of the resolution.
Yeah, I agree, and that's why I asked you, you know, I, I...
That, that's correct, and your, your, your question is perfectly legitimate. Councilman LeShaw raises an even more pertinent and even more legitimate fact that there is a reversion clause, to my knowledge, in the deed, saying that if the property ever ceases to be used by the water service company as such to service the city itself, water and sewer needs, that the land would revert to, back to the city.
Okay, now, that's just what, that's what I was...
But he, Councilman LeShaw asked you that question.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, that's why I was trying to get the understanding about that, that, okay? It's not like school.
Yes, school.
Okay.
All right, roll call, President Booley, yes. Uh, Councilman Booley?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Yenwood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mara Jackson? Uh, Councilman Reddell? Councilman LeShaw?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
And Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, the vote course unanimously, uh, passing the resolution R one oh one nineteen twenty, ratified and affirmed.
And, 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 Mr. President, if I may, um, add another footnote. The mayor, who's obviously the superintendent of the water sewer system, was at the meeting of the water board where all of this was discussed, he had no problem with any of this.
Okay, and of course, for, for Mayor Madison at this time, and of course...
For this?
No, Councilwoman Thomas, you have to...
No, no, I could say, in the, in the near future, you know what I'm saying? Like, I know we had a rush in here to do a special call meeting where you have new bodies, new council people that are on here, that some people might be aware of this, this situation, but given a, a vote on something, I just want it to be more, at least, I know you say you got a deadline to meet, but, uh, I think that's, if they, the water board had met and they discussed this, I think that we should have got a little bit more input on this or just today, for the vote.
Well, the communications didn't get before today. How far back, I have to go back and look at my inbox to see exactly the first day I got an email or a text. But it wasn't just the last couple of days, it was still a short timeframe, so your point is well made. Well, I take it again, that the more the time it gets, the better it is to...
To understand what this is.
But we, as the director, we just got it, I saw it from President, uh, when, when Attorney discovered and brought to our attention in a short period of time, so...
That's kind of reasonable.
There you go, exactly.
That's it, Councilman, Councilman Booley?
I think, uh, you have a copy of the minutes, we can read, in the future, just so we can read that, and that would be a little bit more helpful than just kind of...
Well, I actually...
Not that I don't trust a attorney's opinion, of course, but I think to her, to Councilwoman Thomas's advantage point, a little bit more data would be good, again, if you could bring in a little bit more how that grant's gonna work, just to make sure people have information.
Councilman Booley, when I handed my wife the money, she says, I tell her to count it, she says, I trust you, I said, don't trust me counting.
That's why I like to read.
So, so, so we vote, I can make a mistake too, but I will get that, those minutes and the deed and, uh, have those as part of this file to guarantee that what I said was accurate.
But again, Councilman Booley, like I said, we just got it.
Yeah, no, again, I mean, I'm not...
Again, you are right, and I agree with you, but we just got, I think, Mr. President Booley, and I think we got a text from, uh, Attorney Chestnut. We, uh, something he discovered, within a few days ago, but meanwhile, we have to have that down in the...
Right, and Ms. Ivy's availability, obviously, affects the availability of minutes and stuff. So, again, I, I understand, I'm just speaking to the overall point Ms. Thomas was making about, trying to make sure we have enough information. Again, I understand this is a short situation, but trying to prevent us from being in a situation where we don't have those minutes.
And your point is well taken, and I agree with you, by the way.
And then the other follow-up was that, was that, uh, you and Mr. Thompson had an opportunity to meet regarding a land situation out toward Ward One recently?
Mr. Thompson?
Henry Thompson, at, at Indian Development, did you have a meeting recently regarding?
We did meet.
A homeowner or a landowner that's putting cows on property?
What I understand is, if I'm, if we're talking about the same, if we're talking about the same incident, there, there is a property owner who's seeking to set up an electric, electrified fence to keep cattle or horses fenced in.
Cows.
Well, I, I wasn't sure if it was cattle or, or horses, but this landowner is, has already had a complaint filed by several other adjacent property owners to, to have it, have the action sought to be taken, abated before it ceases and desists. My understanding is that until further investigation by me personally, it should, is any action should abate on setting up anything like an electric fence. Uh, my only question was, was it specifically within the city limits? I've got a map of the property, but don't know exactly whether or not that's within the city limits. It's been represented to me, yes, it's in the city limits. So if that's the case, I'm saying nobody within the city limits should be putting up an electric fence.
Right, to keep cows.
Unless, unless there is a variance, and this is a residential area is what I'm able to believe too, zone residential R one, so that should definitely not be any electric fence going up in a residential area.
I, I couldn't agree with you more, uh, Attorney, and that's why I'm asking the question, 'cause this is something we shouldn't have to the bud before the attorney switched over, and this situation's...
I would think so.
It's gonna get worse because it's simply a violation of a city ordinance.
And I think a letter should be drafted to the owner, and I can do that, uh, within the twenty-four hour, next twenty-four hours.
Please.
A, a, a letter should be drafted telling the owner to cease and desist from erecting any electric fence until such time as proof verification exists that he has a right to do that, and right now, I don't think he does.
And, and, and even more importantly, is to make sure those cows are not put on that property that are in the, within the city limits, because originally, that was the complaint.
And when you first brought this to my attention, I'm not, I'm not even sure I had seen the picture or had been told exactly where the land was.
Right.
But I had heard that was an issue, which is why I wouldn't address it before, I, I needed more information. We've talked extensively now.
Okay, good.
And, and I've got a picture of where the land is situated, whether adjacent or buddy landowners live. I've, I've been through all that within the last, uh, day or two.
Good, okay, so, that meeting did take place, and y'all have moved forward, okay?
Yes, yes.
Because the, the homeowners are getting very impatient, as you can imagine.
If somebody put an electric fence next door to me, I'd be impatient.
Well, and, and again, that's the, the liability concern there. Of course, the variance that was originally offered back in the early nineties, it really been, has been bypassed as old, but the ordinance being put down, saying you can't have livestock in the city limits.
What I didn't have was a valid address, that was what I...
That, and again, I, I tried to get that prior to that meeting, was unable to achieve that.
And we're working on it now, I got, I can't write it if I don't know where you live.
I understand, but I was trying to get that, there may be some information available at our previous attorney's office. The contact information as far as phone number is no longer valid.
I'll reach out to them when I get back to them.
But I did reach out to them to find, I was asking for the phone number to, to get that call taking place, uh, uh, prior to that meeting you were having, Mr. Thompson.
And I do have the addresses of the adjacent homeowners, but I'm not writing them, I'm writing the, the land, the landowner.
Because that land was not purchased, because when people investigated, they found out they couldn't put cows on it, and therefore, the people who were interested in that land originally did not purchase that land, because, yeah, they couldn't put cows on it.
And it seems like somebody's just gonna ignore all that and go ahead.
And it's creating credit little mess over my little section of the...
But you know, my four years, my first four years was by horses.
I remember that.
And, uh, and the law is already in place.
I know, that's...
It's already in place for that, you know, so, uh...
That's what I was thinking.
Even though I don't have a code enforcement, I still got some horses in my area.
Right, I've seen it.
So, even the code enforcement, try to get them, and, uh, so, but, uh, the law is there.
I mentioned, you said your horses aren't protected by an electric fence?
No electric fence, no, no.
No, which is one reason why, but the ordinance out there...
You did pay the law, they, they could wear diapers.
Well, I appreciate you due diligence on that, on that, Attorney, 'cause that is...
No problem.
A burgeoning problem that...
No problem.
I don't need on me.
One other thing, Father, uh, for your information, uh, Mr. President and, and the entire council, what I did, uh, last week, I believe, was present you with contact information for me. That contact information is being updated and will be out to you before the next council meeting, showing a telephone number for me, a telephone number for my secretary, an email address for me, uh, a telephone number at my desk, a cell phone telephone, telephone number for me, an email address for me, email address for my secretary, telephone number for my secretary. All of this technological devices, electronic devices, telecommunications are being, have, have either already been in place or will be in place, uh, hopefully before Monday, so things will happen, good communication process.
Since, since Attorney mentioned he has a secretary, normally, council people don't find, uh, new people that they stumble on. Could, could the attorney bring his secretary and introduce us to the council?
Would you like me to do that right now?
So that we can be aware.
It would be my honor and pleasure to do so.
Also too, Attorney, I mentioned to you, uh, I guess you can bring it up at the council meeting, ask you about, you know, looking into maybe two ordinance, one is for vaping and, and the other one is for signage throughout the, throughout the city.
What, what were those two terms again?
One of them is for the signage throughout the city.
You did, I recall that.
Okay, not so bad, vaping.
Vaping, you did, you, you did both.
And, and any tobacco-related products that we currently don't tax, cigarettes, cigars, Tampa sweets, whatever they are, anything we can get that on, that we're not currently taxing, that are smoke or vice related products, including batteries associated with said thing.
And, and, and for the council, for the council, before I introduce, uh, Mrs. Harrison, uh, I've got a list that I'm compiling from three various sources of information that were given to me, my handwritten notes from talking with you in and out of council meetings, emails that have been sent to me, and, um, text messages and, and various other technological means of communication. I'm compiling a composite list that I will get to all of you of everything I've been asked to do, with the items accomplished checked off, and any remaining items for you to prioritize so that I can have a sense of what the ten of you, I work with ten people, see yourself in general, with ten people, what I can, I want a sense of what your priorities are, I know what mine are, that's the best job I can as a city attorney, but I wanna know what your priorities are, because when you ask me questions like you did today, I want to see if what has already been taken care of, all is in process, uh, in process.
Well, that's like agency contracts, where we were on that, I know that was something that come up this week early too. Agency contracts that were supposed to be done by the previous attorney that weren't done. Uh, some agencies seem to be getting, uh, their money, but some other agencies do not, so if you can look into that, I think Mr. Thompson has information regarding, uh, one of the local agencies that has not received any money since the fiscal year, so why? Um, so I understand that's just a matter of change of date in something's routine.
And I was at a meeting yesterday where I got a list of about five or six work...
Okay.
But, but, but what I'm saying is, I want the entire list in both our hands of things that I'm doing, so I can check off what I've done, and you can prioritize what I haven't done, come from you.
Well, and, and also lets us know what we can do to assist in gathering information or, or assisting in trying to lead any situation, but letting the constituents know where we stand on a situation, or where the remedy is, how far away.
Understood.
Uh, that would alleviate a lot of issues on, on my end, especially phone calls early in the morning.
Thank you. Councilwoman Thomas, before...
Question? Well, actually, okay, okay.
Hello, how are you?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council, ladies and gentlemen, and, and tenants, this is Ms. Malvina Harrison. M-A-L-V-I-N-A, I hope I spelled that correctly. Malvina Harrison, H-A-R-R-I-S-O-N.
M-A-L-V-I-N-A?
N-A.
A-B-I-E.
You have a relation to Mr. Ivy?
Smith Harris, class of seventy-nine.
Smith Harris.
Booley, who?
That's him.
Smith, uh...
Who's that?
Your people, uh, uh, Frank Smith, Lada Smith, Sam Smith, all of them, and she's, uh, from Kappa Phi Tau, B C nine K.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was just gonna take the notes.
I didn't wanna get into the maiden, no, I didn't wanna get into the maiden, no, I don't wanna bring up a touch of something, or anybody, anywhere, anytime. But, uh, Ms. Harrison and I, uh, are well acquainted with each other, we've been knowing each other now for seventeen years. We worked together in college. Her, her skill sets were, and I emphasize the word sets.
Right.
Her skill sets were known to me then, and even, I think, are even more valuable to me and the city of Selma today. All right, everywhere I've been, introducing, she worked here before, I guess.
Yes, she has, and welcome back, I wish you died to say that, welcome back, Ms. Harrison. Delighted to say you're here.
Uh, she started Tuesday, she started Tuesday, so, but give, give, don't, don't end the honeymoon period for her yet, because I wanna keep her as long as possible.
All right. All right.
All right, Councilwoman Thomas?
No, my, my, um, I wanna address to you, I want two items right quick, because I want President Booley to get back. I wanna know, uh, I've been doing a research on, uh, you know, with all this, uh, with our engineer, that, uh, these, uh, grants that are being funded, who is the overseer of him with these projects that they are being carried out? Because, uh, for twenty sixteen, I have been following, uh, a project that's in my ward. Uh, here we in, here we are at twenty twenty, and this project has not been completed, and I've been on and on his own, I know he's tired of me, but serving the, the city of Selma, when you get these, uh, uh, these grant fundings for these streets and sewers to be, who, who oversees that these projects are completely finished and carried out?
The projects that the city engineer himself is supervised, I mean, responsible for?
Who oversees him, who's following up behind him with these projects, because that is too long... Who oversees him, who's following up behind him with these projects, because that is too long.
The city engineer.
This, yeah, uh, you know, you, you go into a district and a ward to do a project, and it's been going on ever since twenty sixteen, and has never been completed. So I'm trying to say, who is, is it, is it our planning developer, Henry is the one that, that, we need to know this, because, uh, that's too long for, uh, an area has not been completed.
Well, the short answer is I don't have the information, now I'll get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Immediately.
I need that.
I have to, I've got the same situation. And people, and, and another thing I would like to say too, he, uh, these subcontractors are getting checks, but they're holding out our, our projects, they're not completing them, they're making them worse, and they're doubling back, and it's just terrible, it's, it's causing problems with people, because when it rains like this, and you come in and put some, uh, grabber down and then, next, all this rain this week, and then it road get back the same way, but then you're cutting checks, you're cutting checks for these people that have not finished these projects, they need to be finished, that's too long.
That's why we need to approve all the checks that get written through accounts payable.
Too many checks are going out of city hall with these projects, and they're not being completed.
We can fix that right then and there.
I got, I, I've written down
Now, last thing, you go through. Uh, back here, we requested, uh, I have a home, a property person that has been trying, he's losing everybody in his, his house. Every time he puts somebody in, they got to move, because we have a tenant that own the property insists on not getting it done, and we request for a letter, I've been asking for this letter for, I don't know, can you go through your email and sticky, and you give me that letter?
Let me make sure I know which letter we're talking about first.
It's a resident on Cedar Drive, he's the, uh, uh, Doc is the owner of the house.
So the, the, the concern is with the owner or tenant?
The, the, the property owner next door, uh, is not, he's running an other, uh, tenant that owns the property. Everybody move out every time they move in because of the, not the upkeeping of the property.
So you have one landowner whose tenants are running away business for another landowner, is that what the issue is?
It is an ordinance, we have an ordinance in the city of Salem for this, and I've been trying to get a letter to this owner for a long time, and the property guy that is taxing, he'll be held, so, um, I need to get that letter.
All right, any other questions for Attorney Madison, any other questions?
I just wanted to make sure, clarify, the council, I'm talking about business that you're working, that I can pay, that we're talking about the water sewer project that has been contracted and being it out, and that the planning and the house under planning development in terms of oversight of dealing with the engineer and the project manager. So when we're talking about, we're not talking about daily contract, we are, she's talking specifically, from my understanding about the water sewer project that's been sitting in her, her ward for a while and has not been completed, correct?
No, yes, that's what I'm talking about, it started in twenty sixteen before I came in here.
So it's not random checks that's coming out of our office, but it is project checks from the grant, grant.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you for clarifying.
I would remind the council that we have the Rashe Road, don't you remember, um, that's a while back? Rashe did, we're not going to remind him before this council, Rashe did a work job for Sam, and he and he had not finished it yet, and, you know, Rashe, he always wanted to get paid. And they, they, the county, they made the
Paid.
voted that, that people couldn't get, get paid until the job was finished. Of course, that's always, that's been the law anyway, but they did the, the, I think there was even a resolution done then, this was a while ago.
But I think it's, uh, let's, let's, Miss, Miss Wade just cleared that up, it wasn't from us, from the city, it's, it's the grant. It's the grant that was done, like, when the sewage project.
Right, right.
It's not from the
Projects.
From the contract, us, we write, it's from the, the project that Ray Hobson doing, and
Oh, yeah.
Right, and that, and that's small stuff.
Yeah, but even, even that really is, I mean, that's supposed to, even on those, really, especially on those, when it's grant, when we're dealing with federal money, um, because really when it comes down, even though it's, that's all federal money, it's supposed to be finished, and I've got one, my Oak Street project, we know how long ago that's not finished. I mean, it's still got that crusher run on it, and I know that check's been written.
And, and now, here's the thing about that is that our engineers submit the payment.
I know, it's not your fault.
No, 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 I just want, so they all understand how it goes, the engineers submit the payment, and according to him, we have so many days to pay him once it hits our account. I think where the breakdown is coming from is who at the city manages the engineer? Who is the project manager, who's communicating back from him, going by, doing the site to see who's doing the work?
I think it's public works.
No, it, it's planning, in the, Karen has been working with him in the past. It should be public works, because this is a public works project. And I think that's where the breakdown is coming from, because once it gets my, to my office, the assumption is that they, they've completed.
Well, also, uh, Mr. President, I, I mentioned about like Saint Anne Street, they, they did some, uh, work on Saint Anne back in, and man, it, it's probably crazy down there. And I, even though they did the patchwork for temporary, I think they got to come back, but still, they still need to come back.
When they get the money, you know.
And that should be on board.
Money talks, well, well.
Yeah, but I, but I think, I know, possibly Mr. Thompson, you know, he's not familiar with the, you know, engineer project. What we may lose in the near future is to go ahead and include somebody who's oversee, you know, these projects, who's familiar with the sewage tract and stuff like that, you know, even somebody with public works, they're, they're not gonna be familiar.
We need to
Yeah, we need somebody.
It's not like the gentleman's here the other day with that, was, uh, we had a business, uh, young blood that, that be with us.
Yeah.
That's a gentleman, it's not that you be.
Oh, save the camera, and this with good skills and talent, let me tell you something, when a, an outfit like that does that, they depend on, you know, they've got five offices all over the state. They're not gonna be, they're not gonna be leaving halfway stuff done.
We made one of the contract, somehow to be, you know, like certain, somehow right there.
Well, that's why when I was looking at getting all this stuff done in Ward Two, that's why I went to a group that's got, that, that's going to, to do it right, and not going to leave crusher run, not, you know, just, they're not done.
Yes, but in great, the project manager?
Yeah.
Yes, but the thing is, when he's got people screaming at him that want their checks, he's going to go and do, and, you know, and, and I'm not just totally blaming him, raise my friend and I love him, I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to hang him out to dry, but the fact of the matter is, when it comes to getting this work, all this stuff that we've got to have done, we've got to have these degrees and these things taken care of. And we've got to have it taken care of effectively and efficiently as, as can be done. And, um, you know, I, I, I'm on, when it comes to Ward Two, I'm gonna have somebody that I know is gonna finish it up and have a strength that we, that, that I know people are gonna be able to drive down, not bump in and have rocks coming up hitting their undercarriage on the car, but that's just the name of that deal.
Counselor Booley and Counselor Schor will move on.
I was gonna say, besides the Goodwill Mills and Kaywood, if you can't get them, and Civil Southeast is the one that's assisted me with the Barrett Road drainage project through ADEM, and, and Will Barrett grew up in Salem, knows the area pretty well, uh, not just my area, but the sound really well, so, he's been nice enough to, if he's in town, to ride by and check on a project for us. Uh, so I've had him look over some things, just kind of give me a ballpark understanding, and he's been very kind to do that, so, if you can't get Cedric, obviously, I'll be happy to get you in touch with Will Barrett.
Civil Southeast is good, and I love Will Barrett, look, I, I helped bring Will Barrett literally into this world, he and my daughter.
No doubt.
One-year-old picture taken together.
Then you know the value of the young man we have.
And I, and I'm not trying to just pump good, I'm not getting, getting, but, but, set, you know, Southeast just doesn't have the capacity to do a citywide thing, but for something like that, we could probably get Civil Southeast quicker than we could
Well, again, the idea was if you need some engineering assistance and you want to reach out, can't get Cedric, they've been here helping us out, so just an availability for a person, you know, y'all make
Also too, before I put the councilman in short, this was one project, uh, we talked about several years ago. I know Tusk City Engineering Department wanted to partner with the city itself to do something, internship. That could be something that we may want to revisit also, and that's you looking at free services and also to get the experience. So that could be something that I, I, I would probably look at revisiting.
On, on lighter issues, by all means, on these catastrophic issues, I don't know. On the catastrophic ones, I think
Yeah, yeah, but you know, that happens.
Twenty-year guy.
What I'm saying is, we're both, both entities.
No, I agree, on the water project, I love it.
The more the merrier.
Yeah, yeah, all right, Counselor, if you're, if you're, if you're looking for a look up, sort of.
Well, I was under, I was under the impression that we have a project, the project manager oversees the project and sign off completion of the grant, and of course, if there's some hiccup in the project, then, then there should be in the contract itself, whether the contract, the contractor come back in and fix whatever is broken, but no money should be dismissed unless the project manager signs off stating that this project is completed. Now, if the project manager is signing off that the project is completed, and the project indeed is not completed, then that's the project manager's fault, not the contractor. The contractor, once he get that check, he's gone.
Yeah.
But if you have a clause in there where if you discover some, some malfunction in the project and the contractor should be required to come back to complete or to correct whatever the problem is.
If I'm not mistaken, we have that clause, am I correct, Mr. Wade?
I would have to look at the contract.
And also, we need to look and see, because I think, uh, the project manager get his whole full check before the job is completed.
Well, I'll let him verify it, based on the, the, uh, feeling that I receive. He got his upfront money for the design, but he is, when he pays the contractor, give, for example, the last, um, draw request that just came through, one was for four thousand for his services, and sixty-eight thousand for the project manager, I mean, the con, contract. So he gives it as they give it as well, portion goes to him, portion goes to the contractor. So he, he's not getting it all upfront.
He get just the, it is, uh, the people over.
So, but my suggestion, based on my experience in working, and see, I, the, the problem is not about whether he can make, pay, it's the communication, and if council people are seeing that there's something going on, then whoever leaves this project, whether it is the public works director or the planning development director, it's not clear, because this project was already signed off, but I think there needs to be a lot of communication that way between the, the, the department head here and hog engineer, because the project, he has to pay them for their ser, services, the construct, we can't stop paying them or the service is gonna discontinue, but the communication needs to be with the project manager, and that's hog engineer.
Mr. President, if I'm not mistaken, in the last demonstration, Mr. Ray Hobson was coming for us and giving us an update on, uh, on, on stuff, pretty much like every, every other meeting, every meeting gets an update on whatever was going on, especially I recall down here on, uh, Law and Church, um, Katie and was there, he was coming here giving us an update on
My thinking was on that.
That we need to do.
Yes, he had been there quite a while.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, I hesitate to ask this question, but did you have another director that you were asking for me to consider?
Yeah.
You, you were close, I thought you were pretty close to making a
I, I, I'm, I'm trying to beat the clock.
That's all right.
Beat that clock, yeah. Uh, are there any, any other questions, Mr. Wade? All right, next, uh, the other business items, other business items, excuse me, it's the Rock to Caber, you know, they have it every year, uh, starting Thursday, April ninth through April the twelfth, they come before the council, we've been knowing this since my tenure up here, and, uh, I had an email, uh,
Which came?
Email to me, and used to come before the council, and I'd say, uh, we can just move forward, just now, and just go ahead and notify them so they can start making preparations.
I might make a motion to move forward.
Okay, okay, this person had a motion to move forward with the Rock to Caber from Councilman, uh, Johnson, and then second, uh, Councilman, uh, Youngblood, any further discussion? All right, Roll Call, President Boyd, yes, Councilman Booley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson? Councilman, Councilwoman Benjamin? Councilman Rango? Councilman Schor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. All right, here are other business items I do.
I'd just like to, uh, extend a thank you to Cosmic Carmichael, uh, Concrete. They, uh, got a bad puddle on Crescent Hill Road, and, uh, went by there and got some recycled concrete from them, which is a, you know, not a, not a long-term product, but it is a short-term product, and they were kind enough to donate that to us. And I went out there and put it in the hole on Crescent Hill, so, if you do have big issues, you do have concerns, it's pretty inexpensive to get it, and you can put it down yourself, and you pack it, and it will provide some protection to the vehicles that are coming through your area.
What is it?
It's called recycled concrete. So it's like, it's churned up concrete, but when it gets wet, it does have some, some, uh, tamping qualities, so it does set right, and so it will provide, you know, again, in lieu of having nothing in a hole, and it doesn't move out as fast as crusher run does.
Right.
So that works good, and I think you get like a, a truckload of it for like sixty bucks.
What?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's not very expensive. That's why I use it, because I, I can afford nice stuff for my driveway, so I got it for my driveway, and that stuff works great, man, it packs down, and it lasts for a bit, so.
And also too, council members, I'm gonna ask if you would, uh, give Councilman Johnson and myself permission to look at the brick wall that, uh, cut out a bridge, uh, to see if you would move forward to rectify the situation before Jubilee, and I ask Councilman Booley for a number, and I will be giving that individual a call to see what they'd be willing to assess in that, in that project, and also another place, see what they'd be interested in that, uh, help us with that.
Well, Henry, Henry said that you had to go to the insurance, I talked to everybody, said they were gonna try to go to the insurance, because Will hit it, they hit it, and ran, what, what, what's going on, because I would love to move forward right away.
Yeah, that's the process. Jerry Wallo Deepa, who's going?
Oh, yeah, so, I asked you this, right? I've asked, uh, the police department, give me the police report behind an incident, accident slash incident. It's my understanding too, without having the report, it's been represented to me that the individual who did cause the damage did indeed leave the scene, and I'm wondering if the police force are doing any good if they don't know who did it.
That's what I'm saying.
Then it's an insurance matter, or
Scotty Cop down there, we want to worry about that, it's no joke.
We, we're just starting the investigation, but my, my initial information is that whoever hit it left the scene, and
Well, we do have cameras.
Well, the cameras may or may not show the relation to track. I'd be glad to check that too.
Move forward with the repairs and then just get reimbursed from the insurance.
I don't think she waiting, I wasn't asking you to wait.
No, 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 I'm just, we just have the sidebar.
I can move forward with it, I, I got several, unless we got some already, we got some bricks, we're gonna move forward, we need to recycle them in the bricks begin, because they will match, you know, so right now, we can find, take time on chip and recycling.
And then, then it may be cheaper if we can get some bricks, you know, that we're on the work I paid for, and just get them, whoever have a mind of that.
Well, I mean, I, I saw, I
Okay, yeah.
I'll do that.
Okay, all right, all right, Counselor Youngblood.
And is anybody, oh, wait, this is different, this has something to do with the act, the, the, are we, oh, do it there? Um, I apologize.
Counselor, did you have your meeting about the Jubilee?
Uh-huh.
Okay, you, you just want to just bring it up to us in, uh, Jubilee, basically?
Yeah, because we gotta get, uh, something from, uh, they were asking about firearms, and, and, uh, they got some kind of covering down there at Jubilee, uh, you know, when people come in here and stuff, and we're supposed to, uh, see what their policy is that, uh, Sam Walker them have for that, for this event that covers the area, uh-huh, you know, the question was about, you know, like, we, people come in through the Jubilee, and they were saying that, uh, do we, uh, have, you know, anybody that, uh, they don't know if you carry a firearm or something, but we never had that problem.
Check with Chief Over.
Yes, yeah, that's what we say.
John Rock, John Rock, the chief over. When, uh, Mr. President, when are we gonna be reviewing the, the resumes and interviewing with the judge?
Probably, probably.
City judge we have?
Yeah, probably Wednesday, because I think we're gonna have it.
Well, okay, do you have your resume?
I do not, I, I had submitted one to, uh, the clerk, and I have also, I, you, I had
Well, I didn't get it.
Huh?
Well, I didn't get it.
You deleted it, huh?
No, I, I didn't get it, I didn't No, I, I didn't get it, I don't, no, I didn't get it.
I'm Leopold Babin, uh, Mr. President, and I had, uh, served for as acting, uh, municipal judge for Selma. And served as a, a city judge in Louisiana for seven years. I was appointed by, or suggested by, uh, Judge Chestnut, and, uh, in fact, I know major matters of very well. He was my prosecutor. I'm going to be gone for, uh, May, I mean, March fifth through the ninth, that's why I wanted to try, I've got a, a scheduled, uh, out-of-town trip, so I wanted to make sure.
Well, the maker that, um, Wednesday, uh, do we have a copy of your resume?
I submitted it to the clerk, I had carried it to her.
Okay, well, what we probably do, Councilwoman Thomas, Councilwoman Youngblood, if we can just, uh, be up for Wednesday, uh, five o'clock?
It's, it's, anytime, it's alright with me.
Okay, okay.
That's why I was just.
Sue, might you be, check, please.
When we said that, everybody.
We have one, and then I guess, each a sudden. Yeah, so we'll just see, I'll let y'all know about you. Alright, at, at this time, do I have?
Mr. President, I asked, uh, and then Councilwoman Thomas, I asked Chief Fulford if he would be here, is it tomorrow at twelve fifteen?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
He was out of town till today or yesterday.
Okay, yeah.
And he said he would be here tomorrow, Chief Fulford.
Oh.
For Jubilee discussion.
We have a Jubilee, Jubilee committee meeting on tomorrow at twelve fifteen. Yeah, I emailed it, yeah, I had just, I invited Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Jackson, I have RDS, it's something out here, so, as Phil and Lou will make sure we're collecting our taxes and all the stuff like that, but we have a representative from, uh, RDS, you know. Alright, at this time. Alright, Johnson.
Yes, sir.